I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Zwort.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 17th, 2017 meeting. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, minutes passed. Comments and suggestions from citizens, if anybody has anything they'd like to say on any subject, please come up to the podium, fill out one of the blue cards, and speak your mind. Seeing none, we will move on. Next item is consent agenda. There's several things on the consent agenda tonight. Licenses, final release of a letter of credit from Pine Ridge Estates Edition Number One, final release of a letter of credit from the Glen of Economowoc, resolution to contract for professional services for a labor attorney, resolution to contract for professional services for land surveyor and property description services, resolution to contract for retail development consultant for Papp's Farms Town Center and a treasurer's report. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull out item 6F.
6F, okay. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, let's move on to item 6F, resolution to contract for retail development consultant for Papp's Farms Town Center. We need a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion, Matt?
Yeah, the only reason I pulled it out is based on my discussions in the Finance Committee meeting. We haven't used this guy for four or five years. I don't think that we're necessarily getting the best advice, and I don't think it's a necessary item. So that's why I pulled it out, that's why I'll vote against it.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll please.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Next item is, we move to comments or committee reports. First one is Finance Committee. First item is consider act on ordinance to amend municipal code section 27.091A, table 1 and B, 3C, aye, 9B and C, table, and 10B and C, table, and to repeal 270911ABC, table and D, all relating to impact fees. This is for its first reading. Need a motion to approve that, or consider for its first reading?
I'll make a motion to consider for its first reading.
Second. Second, Matt?
Part of our annual year-end process to review the city's impact fees. This is an annual indexed fee increase which is allowed for in our ordinances. This year's construction cost index is 4.4 percent, and our impact fees have been adjusted accordingly.
Thank you, Lori. Any comments or questions? Matt?
I commented on this during the Finance Committee, just for folks in the audience who are watching on TV. I do have concern about the per residential dwelling unit park impact fee. It, I know we agreed to index this as part of the other fees, but, you know, the increase is $105. I think it's going up kind of fast, but I understand from Lori that we're looking at, we're evaluating all of our impact fees right now.
That's correct.
Try to look into, you know, what point do we kind of max out? I mean, 10 years, I don't think the park impact fee should be, you know, six grand. So it's moving up fast, and I'm concerned.
So currently, the park impact fee study is underway. We're also contracting for the highway and transportation impact fee, the water impact fee, and the law enforcement impact fee. We'll be reviewing those in 2018, and it'll be coming back to committee. The impact fee study update takes a look at our needs, makes sure that our fees are in line, not only with our needs, but with other communities. So we'll be taking a further look at this.
Thank you.
When, did you say we'd have that study to look at?
Yes, so we have the RFPs out right now, request for proposals are out. They are due back to my office tomorrow, so we will be bringing the RFP decision to council on December 19th.
That's just for who to do the study?
That's just for who to do the study. We'll get started on it right after the first of the year.
I was thinking maybe they were already out, and we could wait and do this later, but no.
Yeah, no, this is for the, just the indexed part for 18. We'll take a look at the whole study as we move forward in 2018.
Very good.
I can say one further thing to note included in this ordinance is the repeal of the fire impact fee. We have fully collected that fee under our impact ordinance, and that was for the Papp's Farm Fire Station, and that has been fully collected and will no longer be collected in 2018.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Next item is consider act on ordinance to amend section 13.62, paren three, A1 of the municipal code relating to sewer availability charges. Need a motion to give this ordinance its first reading?
Make a motion to give the ordinance its first reading.
Second.
This ordinance is very similar to our impact fee ordinance. This is for sewer availability charge. Again, it is indexed by the construction cost, the construction cost index or the CCI at 4.4 percent.
Any questions or comments? Done, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, next on the Utility Committee, consider act and resolution for wastewater treatment rate adjustment. We need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to act on the resolution for wastewater treatment rate adjustment.
Second.
Would like to report on that.
Good evening. As you are all aware, we typically do an annual rate review to look at all the costs of service and the revenue that we expect to generate in 2018, and this is based on our projected budgets that have been assembled throughout the year for our budget for the wastewater utility, which is almost $4 million. The study looks at all rate classes and all cost centers of our utility, including the treatment plant costs and collection system costs, and lately, our new watershed project. The study looks at whether, first of all, a rate increase is actually necessary, and then actually looks at several different scenarios, taking into account rate of return and the impact on our users. For 2018, we're recommending the 3.1 percent increase for residential customer class. This actually results in a rate of return of 2.63 percent, which is actually been explained and is actually on the low side. Years ago, we would go for 4 to 5 percent rate of return. However, in recent years, we've considered 2.63 percent being adequate because our reserves are adequate. So this will bring in an operating income expected of $89,000 for the year. The impact on the residential rate class will be 77 cents per month, or about nine bucks per year. And for extraterritorial districts, we're looking at 8.1 to 8.5 percent increase. And the license fees that's charged for the wrecks that are in each district will raise by 4 percent, and that's a given fixed amount in each agreement. That's every year is 4 percent. So our sewer rates continue to rank at the average level or below when we compare them to neighboring communities. And we will be providing what we need to keep the utility financially healthy in terms of any capital projects that we have in the future and operating expenses, including our watershed project. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
At committee, we talked about when your last rate increase was. Would you tell us again?
It was last year.
And prior to that, it was, is that every year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been a rate increase almost every year for the last 20 some years, and it's ranged from 2 to 3 percent, generally speaking. We had one year where it was 7.5.
But that has resulted, though, in the return on investment decreasing down to, from the 5 percent to 2.63?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. You want to call the roll please?
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
I couldn't understand.
Kind of was yawning. Aye.
Thank you.
It's a rare thing, he says aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, and the Plan Commission, consider act on final plat for Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Two located north of Lake Drive and west of Prairie Creek Boulevard. We need a motion to approve the final plat?
Make that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Common Council, you have before you the final plat for Prairie Creek Ridge subdivision. This is addition number two, consists of about 46 lots. There's some outlots on this as well. This plat is in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat that you folks did approve several years ago. There will be an outlot shown on this plat, outlot number 13. It's about six acres in size, and it will be a future 20 lots. That'll be the final phase of this project. All the other phases are approved. This final plat allows them to actually sell the lots. It is compliant, again, with the preliminary plat and the comprehensive plan. Regarding the housing mix, this has no impact because this development is already preliminary plat was approved with this number of lots, and it was already factored into those numbers that I presented at the previous council meeting. With this development already counted, we're at 63.8 percent for single-family use. The Plan Commission did review this, and there is some environmental corridors hashed out on your plat. Those areas are defined as what they can and can't do in those areas. The Plan Commission did have questions about those areas, and it was updated in the plat that you have. They made a motion to incorporate that in, which you have in before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason? It was important with those environmental corridors because it's right on the edge of some of the lots on the western side that homeowners, it's very small, a couple feet on the edge of their lots that they can't do anything with, but they anyways where they're at, so. Okay? Seeing no questions, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Okay, next item is consider act on a certified survey map to reconfigure the northeast regional park site and stormwater management outlot located north of Whalen Drive and west of Schumacher Street. Need a motion to approve the certified survey map?
I'd make that motion?
Second.
Jason?
Certified survey map was previously approved, but they ran into some poor soil conditions when they were constructing the stormwater basin, so they had to shift the area over a little bit. In a nutshell, the park is decreasing in size by 29,600 square feet. So that's about .68 acres in size. So the park's decreasing, the stormwater basin's getting slightly larger. The only change is the internal lot lines, the overall outside exterior boundaries are saying the same. There's concerns about, well, who's taking on that cost because now our park's getting smaller? It is a cost share allocation, and all the parties, it'll get factored in. Everyone will be responsible to pick up the difference of that, so. The Plan Commission did recommend approval of this amendment to the certified survey map.
So if we contribute more land, then our cost goes down a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. It's insignificant, it's a small amount, but our cost will drop a little bit where the other parties would increase because we're giving more land now. Any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the roll please.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Next item is consider act on the 2018 utility budget. Go through this first, and then we'll take motions at the end of the presentation.
Okay, tonight, we're here to approve the Economowoc Utilities Budget for 2018. The utility budget process is similar to the budget process of the city where they start in the summertime putting their budgets together. This budget did go to the Utility Committee on October 24th, to the Committee of the Whole on November 7th, and is here tonight for adoption before the City Council. We start with wastewater. We take a look at the financial summaries for wastewater, and you can see in the charts, we'll have these same charts for all three utilities. The wastewater, we look at this from 2009 to 2018. The two columns at the end are the 17 budget compared to the 18 budget. If we take a look at those, you can see that the budget decreases in revenue and operating income by a little bit in 2018, generally because of volume decreases. There is the wastewater utility rate increase is factored into the 2018 budget. The graph on the right is the rate of return. So in blue, it shows the assets of the wastewater utility, and then red, the rate of return. So as Tom said earlier, the rate of return for the wastewater is looking to be about 2.63 percent in 2018. This is a lower rate of return than you'll see for the other utilities, but mainly that is due to the stable operations of the wastewater, its sewer availability charge, and the number of assets that they have. For the wastewater utility capital budget for 2018, we're looking at continuing the work on the aeration blower, the grit removal process, which is $950,000, but is funded through impact fees, and then also street projects in the amount of about $300,000. When we look at our wastewater utility and compare our 17 rates and our 18 rates, we are still in the middle of, and comparable and cheaper than our surrounding and comparable communities. We move on to water budget. Again, we'll look at those same two graphs. Again, when you, my mouse isn't showing up up there, so I'm trying to show you the last two columns on the right that are 17 and 18. When you take a look at those, you can see that we are budgeting a decrease in revenue and operating income for the water utility as well. The revenue decrease is really offset by lower expenses. You can see the expenses are lower, too. The main reason for that is that we had some expenses in 2017 that will not continue on into 2018. The main one is the tower maintenance fee that has been completed in 2017. The reason why the operating income or the operating revenues have decreased for 2018 is because we canceled our rate increase in 2017, and as we look forward to 2018, you can see that a rate increase is not necessary for the water utility in 18 either. During the year of 2018, we will be looking at a rate case to see what the future rates should be for the water utility, and do anticipate that there will be a rate increase in 2019. Currently, the PSC authorized rate is 6.5 percent for our rate of return. The water utility is coming in at about 4.74 percent. While that's lower than 6.5, if we went for a new rate increase right now, the PSC authorizes rates closer to 5 percent right now. So we are right in the ballpark at this time. Capital projects for the water budget include the normal customer meters and service replacements. The main projects that we have here are the street projects for 2018. We've added an additional $925,000 into capital projects to keep up with the enhanced street program that we'll be working on throughout the city. Because of some of these larger capital projects, this is the reason why we'll be looking into their rate case in 2018, just to make sure that our rates are keeping track with the work that we're doing in the water utility. Comparing our rates to others in our area, you can see that, well, it's a little hard to see on here, and I don't have my pointer, but if you look at the box that is in red up there, you can see that we are at about 41 percent. So we're not even half in the middle. We are less than, you know, 50 percent of the average water bill cost of the surrounding communities. So they're doing a good job keeping the rates down for the citizens. If we look at the electric utility, the same budget, the same financial charts, we look at 2017 to 2018, again, we're looking at a decrease in revenue and operating income. For the electric utility, that's mainly due to the decrease in price of purchased power. That's also passed on to the customer, so the income is less, the expenses are less. We are looking at electric utility rate increase mid-year. So we're looking at about a 2.5 percent increase that would take effect about the middle of 2018. That would take our rate of return, if you look at the chart on the right side, would take our rate of return to about 3.94 percent. And 2019, when we have a full year of that rate increase, will be a little over 4 percent and closer to unauthorized rate of return, which will likely be closer to 5 percent after the rate case has gone in. So currently, we have gotten, taken this to the Utility Committee and gotten permission to apply for a rate case. After the application is completed, it will come back to the City Council for your review before it is submitted to the PSC. Capital projects for the electric utility include about $1 million worth of distribution system improvements. Other projects include about $275,000 in transformer replacements, a tandem dump truck, and a compact excavator for a total of $1.65 million in capital projects. When we look at our electric utility rates, if we see in 2017, and then the proposed rate for 2018, we still have a competitive advantage over our We Energies competitor. As a matter of fact, our rates save the citizens about $261 a year over We Energy bills. That's what I have for you tonight. Are there any questions?
Over and up for questions? Seeing no questions, we do, go ahead.
In 2009, I think it was in water, there was a 5.55 percent, I guess that was return as compared to 2018, which was 2.3 in that area there? Why is there such a difference? What happened in that 2009?
Let me get to that page here quickly. I believe 2009 was a time when we had a rate increase. I think we talked about this at the Committee of the Whole as well. We had a rate increase, and we also had a drought. So people used a lot of water, and it was a year of a rate increase. So that made that graph go a lot higher than the rest of the year. So if you want, I can bring it up here again, but that's the reason for the spike that year.
And so in 18, we're stating that people will use less water?
People are using less water, and that when we take a look at the water utility here, one of the reasons why the revenue is decreasing is because the usage is down. Yeah, we have a spike year here for an authorized rate of return plus high usage that year. Now, we haven't, you know, we've been working our way down here. We're at, we're still at, like I said, about 4.74 percent rate of return, which is good. But we do need to keep our eye on that and prepare for a rate case likely to happen in 2019.
Yeah, one of the things we talked about in the Committee of the Whole was usage, you know, per gallon usage goes down, per kilowatt goes down because things are more efficient, but we still have the infrastructure to send you electrical and water and sewer, so.
Right. So when the PSC takes a look at our rate cases, they, you know, when we put our application in, tell them what our costs are, what our usages are, then they, they're the ones that actually put together the formula and authorize a rate of return for us that says, this is how much money you need to make in order to run your operations and keep your infrastructure up.
So we should be encouraging people to go back to incandescent, away from LED?
No, no, we shouldn't.
And flush the toilet more? Okay.
So your fixed costs continue even though your use goes down, so your cost to purchase energy and things like that. So customers actually do save money, but their fixed costs still stay the same.
Yeah. So, you know, we talked about that a lot, about the electric utility, and we'll talk about that a lot more when that rate case application comes back, but we did talk about a design change for that electric rate. And so we would look at the, the overall rate increase wouldn't be higher, but we would be paying more in fixed charges and less in variable charges, so that we can make sure that our fixed operational charges are covered.
That's the one I remember I was talking about.
That's the one we were talking about.
I didn't like that big jump in that, but we're not there yet.
No.
We got to find out what they'll let us do.
Absolutely. Yep. We'll hear more about that later in the year.
Yeah, here in the city, we pay a very reasonable amount for the electricity, for the water, for wastewater. We take it for granted. Anytime we turn on a light switch, we know we're going to get electricity. We turn on the faucet, we're expecting good, clean water. I just want to thank the utility staffs for that because we do take it for granted all the time.
They do a great job.
Good point. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will need a motion to approve an act on the 2018 utility budget.
I'll make that. Make a motion to approve the utility budget as presented.
Second it?
Moved in seconded. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the roll please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Next, we have consider act on developers agreement for Weston Meadows Two subdivision. We need a motion to approve the developers agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fry.
Mr. Fry drafted this thing, and off of our template, and it is exactly our template, so. Mr. Fry?
Professionally done. Thank you, sir. The item for you tonight is the developers agreement for Phase Two of Weston Meadows Subdivision. In the background memo, this is going to be a 54-unit development, 34-unit, single-family, and 20 units, 10 duplex units for, or 10 duplex buildings for a total of 20 units. They range in size from, excuse me, in the 8,000 square feet to 11,300. That's a lot of the single-family. There are some larger single-family lots on cul-de-sacs and on the eastern side of the development that are almost 12,000 feet to, one lot's almost 22, just over 22,000 square feet. So the developers agreement for you tonight is our standard template, and there weren't any changes to that document.
Questions? Jeff?
Mark, this doesn't get us yet to the point where we're back out to Mark's Road, right? This is more towards the back end, behind what's already there, and a little bit to the west.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So there would be a Phase Three and maybe Four?
This is, you know, this is on the east side of Mark's Road, and then the additional phases that come in later will be on the west side of Mark's Road.
Okay, in these developers agreements, are we looking at anything that has to do with the roads that feed that, and either replacing, upgrading, sharing costs with the city on that?
Not in this one.
Not in this one yet?
Yeah, the departments will look at whether you need D cell, X cell, lanes, and that sort of thing. I don't think that is a case in this design.
There wasn't anything called out. They did do a traffic impact analysis for this development.
Right, and kind of where I'm going with that is as this area develops, what's unique about it is the fact that some of the roads are in the town of Economowoc, and some are in the city. The main road coming in is going to be Frontier Road, which, that'll come in and hook up with Redland Road, I think? with Redland Road, I think?
The future developments layout would have Redland Road shifting slightly westward so that it aligns with Frontier. And then from there, it would then go out to Wisconsin Avenue, Highway 60.
And that's the time or the area that I'm looking at.
And so when they do that realignment, they'll be completely reconstructing or building a brand-new road as part of their development for that.
Yes, they will for Redland Road, but as I brought out when we first discussed that, my problem with the whole thing there is the fact that the town roads are not in very, very good shape, but they are town roads and they're going to feed this subdivision. And again, looking at the turn lanes and some of the access to the subdivision, I think we're putting a burden on the taxpayers of the city to eventually work with the town to upgrade some of those other roads. And it's not going to fall to the developer. So I think, you know, we really need to work with the town and the developer on the future phases and so, but you've answered my question. Thank you.
Any other, Alderman Shaw?
On that same vein though, Jeff, there's, I talked with Mark about this today, that access, construction access into this should probably be coming off Capital Drive and not necessarily off of Redland Road because it can't handle that. So, and Mark, you talked, you, we talked, you know, does that need to be part of the developers agreement or is that part of the pre-construction process? And you said that that all gets discussed during the pre-construction meetings.
Yes, exactly. The, we had a little bit of a conversation because of the unusual fact that even though city streets around this development, you can't get there without driving through the town, with the exception of using Wisconsin Avenue to Capital Drive coming up into the development that way. We indicated to the developer that that's an all-city route, which they would be able to use if they wanted to do their trucking on the town roads, that they would need to go to the town and get their permission for doing that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mark, I think you were talking earlier in your statement about the north side of Mark's Road, you meant to say west of Redland Road. Because you were mentioning north of Mark's Road is nothing but swamp and some development there, so.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor to approve the developers agreement. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Excuse me. Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kabyeski.
Aye.
Okay, next, mayoral appointments to city boards, commissions, and authorities. We have two tonight. I'm going to point to the Community Development Authority, Chad Van De Zandey. He's not here tonight, but I did meet with him. He's been a resident of the city for many years, lives over west of downtown, has a background in real estate. And I'd like to appoint Chad Van De Zandey. So I need a motion to approve Mr. Van De Zandey.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Van De Zandey.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Go ahead. No. Okay. Moved and seconded. Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kabyeski.
Aye.
And to the zoning board of appeals, I'd like to appoint John Zapfel. He is a newer resident of the city, but he has experience in government and he graciously volunteered to be on the zoning board of appeals, which I believe we'll be having a meeting shortly.
Yes, I think December 6th.
Appeal coming up, so I'd like to appoint him. So I'd like to get a motion to approve his appointment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Questions?
No, I just, I found it interesting that in his choices to committees to be on, it wasn't one of the committees that he had for his choices.
One, two, three, zoning wasn't even mentioned.
But it did, but it did say he'd be willing to serve on any committee. So did you really have to talk him into this one?
No, it was, and he was gracious enough to take on the zoning board of appeals, which is an important committee to be on. And he wants to contribute to this community that he lives in and I thought that was wonderful, so.
The zoning board of appeals is quasi-judicial, too.
Yes, it is.
So it's a little bit of a different, you can't just, oh, I want more parks or whatever. It's a little bit more heady.
And he has a government background, which is helpful, so.
I just want to thank both of them for their interest in.
Yep. So we have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kabyeski.
Aye.
Okay, under staff reports, we have one from Laurie, she's going to comment on the city cable channel that works sometimes.
Could've just stayed up here all day.
I know, last time, too. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but we, our cable channel is dark. It is not broadcasting. And we found out, interestingly enough, from the cable company. There hasn't been any citizens that have called us and said, hey, your cable channel's not working or I can't see the council meeting. So we're looking right now at how much it would cost us to, basically what happened, we talked to the cable company, we are broadcasting in analog, they are broadcasting in digital. So it's no longer working between the two of us and we would have to update our equipment. And so right now, we're looking at a quote, trying to get a quote to see how much that equipment would cost. In the meantime, we've got a little experiment going. We did put last meeting, last council meeting, on the City of Economowoc YouTube site. So we have a site and I believe Kristi Weber was using it for a little while when they, and some of the Park and Rock people were using it for a while. It's not well-used, but it's something that we can take a look at using. Besides looking at the cost of the upgrade for the cable channel, we're also looking at alternatives to find more ways to get information out to the people where they might actually see it or use it. So I'd be interested to know if any of you have heard from constituents that they haven't been able to watch our cable channel. And then also to get the word out that we would be, we are putting these current council meetings on YouTube. We'll put something on the website with a link. The nice thing about YouTube is right in where we have the council meetings and you can get the minutes, we could embed a link as well to go to the video on YouTube. So we're looking at maybe some new ways to move forward in getting information out. We talked at the department head meeting about, besides just council meetings, that, you know, the electric utility and some of the other departments could put informational videos out there on YouTube as well. So I just wanted you to know that we're looking at it. We're trying to find out how much it would cost us to continue with cable. We'll have a further discussion about whether or not we should continue with cable or if we should start doing more with the website and maybe with YouTube and Facebook. So that's a discussion that's coming up. But in the meantime, if you go to YouTube, search for the City of Economowoc, you'll see our logo, you'll find the council meetings. We'll also put a link on our website.
Could we?
Go ahead.
Is there a way that we could put a link right by where the minutes are?
That's what she was talking about.
Yep. Yeah, and that's what we were talking about. So that would be an easier way, you know, to get to that.
That's where you would find it on any other municipality's website. It wouldn't be.
Yeah, and we were taking a look at some other cities that use YouTube as well. I was looking at City of Green Bay and City of Beloit that use all of their council meetings and then some of their other meetings and other information about the city is out there.
I think that makes the most sense, so. Go ahead, go ahead, just, we'll just keep them short here since it's a report from her.
Yeah, when it's YouTube, it's not livestreamed though, right? It's recorded and then just posted?
Exactly. Yep.
So live streaming should be something we look, I mean, like a live stream in our case?
Yep, and we've also are, we're also going to look into live streaming on Facebook. Okay? So these are things we'll bring back later. The cable channel, we'll find out how much it costs to keep it up. We need a decision whether we should or not. Charter would like to take the channel back if we're not going to use it. So we'll talk about that later. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yeah, I have a real quick, you know, people do watch it because somebody told me they saw me, you know, at a council meeting except for I was in the hospital that night, so.
Yeah.
I would encourage and like to see the alternative video channels explored, not only for meetings, but we are an environment, or an event-rich community. And streaming or making video available to homebound or to elderly who can't make it to things like parades and other activities like that would probably be a service that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think we could expand on that.
Thank you, Laurie. Any other staff reports? Seeing none, going to comments from the mayor. I think a couple of things. This weekend is the German Christmas market. Starts on Friday, 11:00 a.m. Everybody, please come down if you have a chance. The weather's supposed to be nice. Get a chance to go into that big tent and see how big it is and, you know, what's going on. So I encourage everybody to come down. There will be a lot of people in town, which is good. And before our next meeting, we have two other things. One is the Christmas parade, which is the December 2nd. We're going to have a tree lighting ceremony at the beginning of that. And then on December 3rd is the Holiday Train, which will be in town at about 6:55, 7 o'clock in that timeframe for a half hour. And we're going through plans on getting that set up. So there's going to be a lot of activity over the next couple of weeks between now and our next meeting, so try to attend as many things as you can. There'll be a lot of people in town. Reports and comments from Alderman. Kevin?
I, um, I had something happen to me last week that I want to thank the utility department. I, this is my first year or going through this budget cycle, and I had a lot of questions. And whereas I try and educate myself to the best of my ability, there's still a lot of holes that need to be filled. And last week, I believe it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, I had a gentleman come to my establishment and he spent an hour and a half educating me on utilities. And it was by far the best hour and a half I could have ever spent. I learned so much in that time that it was just incredible. I want to thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Any other comments? Pat?
Just one real brief one. When these folks pass in this City of Economowoc information profile for the public service appointments, I think it'd be very helpful to have a resume attached. So some people do, some people don't.
Yeah.
So I think most of the time they do, but I think it should be something that should be, even if they don't have a formal resume, at least a paragraph or two about what they have to offer. Because I think it helps us evaluate these folks.
Yeah.
We trust you, you know, meeting with them and that, but I think having the resume, like Zapfel's resume was like, wow, the guy's got a lot of experience in government. That's a no-brainer. Just, you know, just my one, two cents on that.
Okay.
Two cents? My two, two cents?
Your opinion?
Four, two cents. Okay.
Jeff?
Just a couple of quick things. I want to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving holiday. And also, I wanted to thank in advance all of the volunteers that have been putting in so much time, Bob and the crew down there setting up the German market and getting everything going. And I know that there's equal amount of energy going into things like the Christmas parade right now and staff looking at how we're going to handle the Holiday Train and everything. So it's a lot of extra time at this time of the year for all of our city staff and a lot of our volunteers in our community. And thank you very much for, to everybody for getting involved.
Echo Jeff's sentiments in regards to all the efforts that are going into all the activities and events that are upcoming. And just with this time of Thanksgiving, we are in a community that is very special and very thankful for everything that we have in front of us and for all that we have behind us as well. So look forward to the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Lou. Any other comments? Kevin?
I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and watch your alcohol consumption.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, again, I like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, too. I should've mentioned that myself. Last item, we're going in the closed session. Per Wisconsin stats, 19.85% for N1, per any deliberating or negotiating to purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is site options for a new police facility. Need a motion to go in the closed session?